One, I'll call the, we do have a quorum. I'll call the October the ninth, 2018 Board of Supervisors Meeting to order. We have Pastor Long Tobin from St. Paul United Methodist Church here to do our invocation. If you'll come on up, please, and everybody, please stand and remain standing for our pledge.
Let us pray. Great and gracious God, Creator of all that is, Redeemer of all who call upon you, Judge of our world and our friend, we ask this night your blessing upon this Board of Supervisors and their work. Whether we are leaders in the church or in secular government, remind us of our responsibility to those we ask to follow us. Remind us that progress often involves compromise, not of our principles, but of our biases. Remind us of your promise to freely give wisdom to those who ask. In fact, you've told us that you're able to do far more than we can even ask or imagine. And remind us that as long as anyone is oppressed, we are all oppressed, that until all of us are free, none of us are free. Finally, Lord, be with our families and our community. Help us always be aware of your presence, so aware that our actions, our words, the work we do here and in the future will help make our city and our county a place where your will is done, even as it is in heaven. We ask this in your son's name, who came not to be served, but to serve. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, welcome everyone. We have three public hearings tonight. We'll move into our first public hearing, and I'll read the public hearing notice. In accordance with the Code of Virginia and amendment thereto, the With County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance entitled Appalachian Regional Exposition Center Omissions Tax Ordinance of With County, Virginia. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, October the ninth, 2018, at 7:05 PM in the boardroom of the With County Office Building, 340 South Sixth Street, Wiffle, Virginia, at which time the board will hear comments from citizens concerning the proposed ordinance. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file for public viewing in the With County Administration Office located at 340 South Sixth Street, Wiffle, Virginia, or online at www.withco.org. Before we open for public comments, you want to summarize the ordinance, Mr. Bear?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. What you've got before you is an omissions tax ordinance. It is only applicable to the property where the Apex Center is located. The levy amount of the tax is 10% levy on the tax. The only exception is any ticketed event less than $1, there is no levy on it. But other than that, it's a 10% omissions tax on all the events.
Okay, with hearing that, I open the floor for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on the proposed ordinance of the omissions tax. Here none, I'll close the public hearing. Our next public hearing is disposition of real property. Notice of public hearing, the With County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October the ninth, 2018, at 7:10 PM to hear public comments on disposition of the following real property. Parcel 75-255-F located on Newtown Church Road, parcel 63-49, and adjoining parcels on Castleton Road, lots in parcels 43-26 on Chapman Road, and lots on parcel 20, I mean 42-41, and 27-61, and 27-59 in Progress Park. A public hearing will take place in the boardroom of the With County Administration Building, 340 South Sixth Street, Wiffle, Virginia. Mr. Bear, you want to summarize the...
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Code of Virginia requires before disposition of any property that a public hearing be held. The first parcel, and if anyone would like, Ms. Collins can pull up a picture of where they are, but the first parcel, 75-255-F, is an old water tract parcel, has a tank and an old building on it. It's in the middle of Austonsville Limestone's property. It is actually sort of actually within side of their gates of their property. We are entertaining an offer from the company to sell that to the company and use those proceeds to help with convenience center relocation project we're working on in Austonsville. The second parcel is the old Barron Springs Fire Department and old school building down there. The Buildings and Grounds Department will be addressing this later as well, but there are two parcels down there that we are looking at disposing of. The next is parcels, lots on parcels 49, 43-26. This is the area adjoining the Apex Center. This is our 56 acres that we still own there. This is just a general public hearing notification of it for those lots that we are looking at developing and marketing that, and the same for the lots on the 42-41, 27-61, and 27-59. Those are all the lots, parcels that the county has within Progress Park. So, the intention was just to hold a public hearing to get any comments on the disposition of any and all of that property. The top one on Newtown Church Road is one that is definitely being considered to be disposed of immediately. The second one on Castleton and Bram Lane is the other one that's looking at being disposed of. Be glad to answer any questions anyone has.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. I will now open the floor up for public comments, if anyone would like to speak on the disposition of real property.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We had made a provision, we thought about making a provision for Rita Scott for the use of the old schoolhouse down there, but since then she has sent a letter in saying that she no longer is able to take care of it, she's not able to take the water bill. So, in other words, she's come to back over there.
Now, I think each board member has read that letter. Here none, I'll close the public hearing. Next public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, we are a little ahead of schedule, and that public hearing is scheduled at 7:15. Would you like to go on to citizens' time and some other order of business? Don't know that it'll make a bit of difference, but we're a little bit ahead of schedule.
Well, when we move down, and since we have the With County School Superintendent here, if nobody doesn't mind, I'll ask Dr. Jeffries to come up and speak.
Certainly. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Mr. Bear, it is my honor to be here this evening to give you a little update on our school system, and hard to believe, we completed our 43rd day of school today. End of the first quarter is actually on Thursday, and so we will soon be able to say we are one-fourth of the way finished with the 2018-19 school year, and that just seems hard to believe. It's, I know it was back in July when we last met as a joint boards meeting between the Board of Supervisors and the School Board. July, as the calendar goes, wasn't that far back, but as this year has gone, it seems like it's, just like yesterday, it's been flying, so. But I'm honored to give an update on our school system and how things have been going on. In 43 days, it's been busy. I've been really getting to know individuals, starting off every single day that I'm here in the county. Morning arrival, I've been to each school multiple times. Starting to get that into classroom visits now. Been really enjoying getting in to see what is going on within our classrooms. With County has an awful lot to be proud of in regards to instructional programs at our schools. In every single setting that I've been in, in every single classroom that I've been in, from kindergarten to mechanics, to carpentry classes, to chemistry classes, the instructional program that is going on has been really, really impressive. It's one of the hallmarks of the school system, and what I think is vital is that, is one of the hallmarks of this county. As I stated before, and I'll say it time and time again, that's one of the reasons why I came down to this and sought out this position. The instructional programming here, the academic success, and the community support really sets With County, what I think, apart, and the results speak for themselves, but like Frank Sinatra said, I do think the best is yet to come, so I think we'll continue to make market improvements in there. Aside from the classrooms, I've been trying to get out to see our students in action. Been to volleyball games, golf matches, which by the way, congratulations to George With High School, state champs yesterday in state golf. Cross-country events, football games, band practices, middle school football, been to open houses, pep rallies, parades. Supposed to be in a parade tomorrow, weather permitting. I don't know if it's gonna happen or not, but supposed to be up in the, for the parade up at Fort Chiswell, so hopefully weather permitting, we have that. Excited to start some advisory groups. I'll be starting student advisory group, parent advisory group, and a teacher advisory group, meeting with those three different populations next week. It's important for me to get different perspectives, different viewpoints from individuals across those three different populations, just get their feedback on our school system, and actually help guide our school system in a direction that we all want to head. And so, it's important for me to use a collaborative approach. It's kind of how I lead, it's kind of how I do things, and I'd be remiss if I didn't start these committees as soon as possible, and so we're gonna start those next week. I've had great meetings with Education Association, other region superintendents. I've had regular meetings with school board members, Mr. Bear, we get together monthly, different leadership team meetings and principals meetings, and this has been really, really great, and I want to thank all those individuals during this transition that's getting the year started for all this. It's been great to get to know individuals. A couple of things I want to bring to light is, October's a busy time, but if you are interested, please let me know. October 22nd through the 26th is Read Aloud to a Child Week, and I'll entertain if you are interested in visiting one of our schools, to sit down in one of our classrooms and to read to some of our classrooms. I encourage you to contact me, I'll contact my office, any one of our principals, love to have you in there. October is also Bullying Prevention Month and Disability Awareness Month, and so we'll do some recognitions at our next school meeting in regards to that. And October 15th through 19th is National School Lunch Week. So maybe if you're out and about, you want to enjoy a hot delicious lunch, come on by, we'll get you, and so it'll be great to see you out there. Our attendance numbers look strong through the month of September, so the first two months of school, we don't have one school that's sitting below an attendance rate of 95%. Everybody's 95% or above. I think the Strive for Five campaign has been very well received. It's been great to see the different promotions that are out there on social media, different school promotions. I even heard that there is a pink hair challenge between Mr. Dowdy and over at Sheffy and Randy over at Max Meadows in terms of which school has the highest percentage rate for that month, gets their hair dyed pink, I think it is, and so it's, or the loser has their hair dyed pink, and so, you know, these different challenges to encourage and promote positive school attendance has been very well received. And our enrollment is up to 3,919. Our budget was set for an ADM of 3,930, so a little bit below that what we had budgeted, but hopefully our numbers continue to go up and not down, but we are monitoring our budget appropriately and constant communication with the finance office. Keep on encouraging everybody to search WCPS Success on social media. You will start seeing a whole lot of positive promotions about our school system, from different principals, to different teachers, to student groups, to teams, athletic, and also band, different service organizations. There's a lot of positive things being expressed on behalf of our students in our schools, and encourage everybody to search that out. And then finally, I just want to say thanks to members of the Board of Supervisors for their support, members of the School Board, and Mrs. Johnson here, so thank you for coming out, Ms. Johnson, and other School Board members. And really, I want to finish by saying that thanks to you all for the wonderful gift of SROs. They have been absolutely fabulous. To see them become a vital part of the school community is going to leave a lasting legacy that I don't think any of us will be able to realize until a few years down the road. It's been incredible to see how they interact with our kids, the level of trust that they have built up with our kids. Staff has done nothing but been positive in terms of their response to our SROs. Building level leadership has been very, very positive too, so thank you for every single effort and continued effort for that, for seeking additional grant money to supporting our SROs. Just thank you one and all for that. I do have a little bit of an update in terms of the renovation project at George With. Dr. Poole cannot be here this evening, he's coaching. I do have an update here. Just think of somebody who is skinnier, has glasses, and he might have more hair. I don't know if I have more, I don't know who has, but I will do my best to entertain any questions as well in regards to the George With renovation project. Basically, the plumbers, electricians, and HVAC teams are really busy right now. They were doing a whole lot of work in the senior wing. Duct work has been installed in those areas. Electricians are working evenings. An additional power source has been installed in the courtyard. The cafeteria entrance will now serve as the means of students entering the back of George With and making their way out to the tech center, and so that exit at the end of the senior wing is now off limits. Actually, all the windows are out of that senior wing. They're gonna start taking the windows out of the auditorium in the near future. Thank you one and all for your help and support about the generator. I know Dr. Poole would want me to express that as well. We're actually able to salvage some items within that senior wing to not only be used in the renovation, but also to kind of pave forward. There was one of the hoods in one of the science labs that's been donated to the Sheriff's Department. Lockers were donated to the county, to Fort Chiswell, and other areas, and some of the casework is being repurposed in some of our science classrooms as well, so any opportunity that we see that we can reuse some of the renovated items for this new project, we're doing, even to the point where some of the chairs are in the media center at George With are being sanded down, recoded, and they look absolutely beautiful, and so we'll be repurposing those as well. Still running to some issues with Mastic, particularly in the new wing and carpet in the auditorium. They're still dealing with asbestos abatement with that, but in terms of the timeline, by all accounts, they're still on schedule for what they had set out to do. I will do my best to answer any questions regarding the renovation project, but it might be better if I take those questions and pass them on to our project manager with that and clerk, Mr. Dr. Poole, and so, but I'll entertain any questions, whether it's with the renovation or with the opening of the school at this time, should you have any.
Any board member have any questions for Dr. Jeffries?
Was the 3,917 about what you had figured out?
The budget for this year was on 3,930, and so our current enrollment right now is 3,919, and so we're a little bit low than what we had budgeted for. Not far off, but a little bit low.
Yeah, it could change.
It could. Last month, at the end of August, our first month, we were at 3,915, so we'll see.
Anyone else have any questions?
Dr. Jeffries, I really don't have a question, and I know I've told you this, and I've told Ms. Johnson, but in front of the board, I just want to reiterate, and it makes it a lot easier since he's not here, our appreciation for Dr. Poole's work in the refinancing.
Yes, sir.
I know he worked on it, and Mr. Bear, they stayed in contact for several months, and that's, you know, that trickles down, that saves everybody a lot of money, and you kind of hit on everything. I was gonna discuss, you know, what you guys did, or what they did at the tech center with those chairs, and if you haven't had a chance to see them, they're solid wood chairs, and they refinished them, and...
Beautiful.
I don't know what it would cost to replace those with something comparable, but...
Yeah.
They really did, the students did an excellent job with those.
Absolutely did. You know, not to dovetail too much on that, but, you know, I've worked in other school systems, and I have really close colleagues in other areas, but you mentioned a relationship and the teamwork and collegiality between, you know, the finance office of the school system and working with you, Mr. Bear. That's a special thing. Like, you don't see that everywhere, and so to kind of have this collegiality and collaboration and the spirit, it really is something that With County can be very, very proud of. You don't see it everywhere, y'all, you just don't, and all you gotta do is look at any kind of, you know, newspaper, especially come budget time, different areas here, but this relationship is good, and anything that we can do collaboratively to help save, you know, our citizens, our neighbors, you know, anything, it's vital, it's really, really important, and so anything I can do to help facilitate those relationships and help enhance those relationships, that's what I'm here for, that's what we're committed to do, that's what we're open and honest about doing. But I couldn't echo your thoughts enough, it's special, and so, thank you. It's been great getting to know you, Mr. Bear, we've had good conversations and broke bread, and so hopefully we continue doing so.
Thank you for everything you're doing. It's nice to see you in the schools.
Well, thank you, it's...
Nice dropping off the kids and seeing you there.
It's, you know, at some points in time, it's, becomes the best part of my day, real early, and so, but it's also that reminder of why we do it. Told Mr. Horn this morning, I said, "I see you first thing, and I'll see you last thing," and so, saw him, but he didn't honk his horn too loud at me, so, but, you know, everybody's been really, really welcome, and kids are great, staff's great. Seeing everybody get dropped off, it's a great way to start a day, so.
And I want to reiterate along lines of what Supervisor Rob talked about, the, and since all the money is now in the bank finalized and everything is closed out, I will work with Blake on putting out a little bit of positive publicity about this because that was a huge deal. Their staff going back through records, 2010, 2011, to be able to go back and pull out payroll applications and all of those things that helped go through this, our bond counter Webster Day argued very hard on our behalf to make certain we got the full $10 million, just not the seven and a half, 7.6, that would've been refinanced. So, we refinanced 7.5, 7.6, and 2%, but then more importantly, the rest of the money we need to finish the George With project, we don't have to go out and borrow now at a 3% or 3.5% rate. We locked that in at that 2%, and that's come back in, been putting in the school construction fund to go in there. That's just a huge cost savings for the future right there, and appreciate Ms. Collins and everybody else working on that project, so thank you.
Anyone else have any comments?
I just want to say it's neat, I mean, when you pull up and he's standing out there to get the kids off the chair. This morning, I had one get off, and I heard a smack, and I realized, I realized after a minute that he was just getting a high five, he really didn't get the kid, the kid didn't get it.
High fives are right, yeah, high fives, that's right, that's right.
I think that's a neat thing to do.
And it means a lot to the kids, and the teachers and the parents.
Yeah.
Something you don't see very often.
The last item I've got, sent you all the email previously, just confirming we'll look at meeting before your next School Board meeting, which will be at Fort Chiswell High School, and just meet on the grounds out there at 4:30. We gotta be finished by 5:30, they got a School Board meeting to get started, but it gives us a chance also to have a meeting away from here.
Yeah, and that's one thing, that reminded me that the School Board is taking their show on the road. I think that's, that's pretty neat to do, go out to the community and have your meetings in the different schools, so.
Well, it's great to see you and Mr. Lester at the meeting down in the row retreat, that was, that was fun, and it was, you know, it was important to get out there and get an opportunity to showcase, you know, some different student groups at these meetings, and there's one last thing I failed to mention here from, on behalf of Dr. Poole, please, if anybody's interested in walking through the George With project, please let us know. It'd be more than amenable to help you out. If he's unavailable, I'll make sure that I'm available or somebody is to kind of walk you through if you show desire to see the project at any point in time.
I told him I was wanting to come up, just soon as I can get time, I'm...
Right, it didn't go anywhere.
And they usually don't work on Fridays, so it's, they work 14. That's usually the best time to go.
It is, it is.
Dr. Jeffries, thank you for your comments, you know, I agree with you, you know, working together, and so, you know, we get a whole lot more accomplished by doing that than arguing and being so divided, so thank you for your comments, and I look forward to working with you for a long time, and hope you enjoy With County, and hope you stay for a long time.
Yeah, yeah, so do we, so do we. Everybody's been really welcoming to Susan and I, and, you know, we've thoroughly enjoyed our transition here, and this is home, this is home, and so likewise, continue to, hopefully continue working in a positive manner for years and years and years to come. And let me know if anybody needs anything or has any questions. It doesn't have to be invited to come out here, pick up the phone, give me a call, stop on by, honk the horn, do whatever, and...
Well, I've done a little check, and I know you got a 30-year mortgage, so...
Yeah, well, as I told Ms. Johnson and the other board members, I don't want to go through the process of interviewing anymore, so I'm committed here, we want to be here for sure, so, all right.
Okay.
Thank you all, appreciate it, thank you.
It's probably 7:15 now, I can go back into my life's public hearing. Notice of public hearing in compliance with section 15.2-2247 of the Code of Virginia and amendment thereto, the With County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing to consider amending ordinance number 2002-5 entitled Manufactured Home Ordinance of With County, Virginia. The Board of Supervisors will hear comments from citizens concerning the adoption of the proposed amendments. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, October the ninth, 2018, at 7:15 PM in the boardroom of the With County Office Building, 340 South Sixth Street, Wiffle, Virginia. A copy of the proposed amendment is on file in the County Administration Office located at 345 South Fourth Street, Wiffle, Virginia, for the public to review or online at www.withco.org. Mr. Bear, you want to summarize the proposed amendment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a relatively straightforward and simple amendment. The ordinance currently states that a special use permit shall be required for camps and parks for travel trailers and mobile homes. This just adds a clarification that any expansion to an existing campground or park will require a new special use permit, and that's for the area that's been expanded. That's just a clarification to help out, so that's the only change that's been proposed by this amendment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bear.
And now open up the floor for any public comments. Anyone would like to speak on the proposed amendments, ordinance 2002-5? I think that's what it was.
Yes, sir, it's correct.
That amendment does not affect the existing park, correct?
Correct. No difference.
Here are no public comments. We'll close the public hearing. Now we'll go on the entire agenda, citizens' time. Have any citizen, I know nobody signed up, any citizen would like to speak during citizens' time? Here are none, we'll close citizens' time. Next item on the agenda is payment of invoices. Entertain a motion to approve. Have a second. Have a motion, a second, to approve the invoices. Is any invoice, any board member would like to pull out or discuss? Here are none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball? And the chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of the previous meeting, September the 25th, 2018. Entertain a motion to approve. Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any correction or changes need to be made to the minutes? Here are none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni? Old business, appointments, With County Rescue Squad Board. I know they're one member short. If I'm not mistaken, does anybody have any nominations to appointments to the With County Rescue Squad Board at this time?
We have some emails from people interested in it.
We got some emails.
About one mayor conflict?
There was a conflict on that email, but we also got an email from Cody Jackson about the, that's, that might be what you're thinking about.
For the emergency, yeah. Yeah, I just put this back on the agenda. No one has mentioned any names to me. I just was gonna put on the old business until we have someone appointed there.
Well, we need, board members, we do need to look and see if we can find anybody to serve on the With County Rescue Squad Board. And preferably in their area of service. Mr. Bear, is there anything else in our old business?
I do not have anything else, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, new business, Building and Grounds Committee report?
Yes, Building and Grounds Committee met. Recommendation to solicit bids for parcel 63-49 and the adjoining parcel as discussed by Mr. Bear earlier.
Clarification on this, and Mr. McRoberts said earlier, this was a property the board previously talked about trying to look at selling, but trying to keep some type of right of access to the old building. With the letter we have received, now we'll just be looking at conveying the property in its entirety. And that just needs to be an update recommendation from the board as well, went to Buildings and Grounds instead of selling that separately.
Okay.
Question.
Yes.
Wouldn't we have to declare surplus? Or have we declared?
Well, basically, that public hearing you had earlier was included this property, so we could solicit bids off of it, off of that now. So, it's not as much declaring it surplus as it is disposition of the property.
But we still need to vote?
Still need to vote on that recommendation to look at getting bids on all of it. Yes, sir.
Okay, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any more questions? Here are none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball? The chair votes aye. Anything else from Building and Grounds?
Mr. Chairman, I will mention just on this matter, we did discuss whether or not we would be surveying the property. Mr. Farthing is out of town currently. I'll be reviewing it with him, but based on my review with Ms. Castle of the old deeds and the deeds that conveyed it to the county, we may, may be in our best interest to look at surveying the property prior to selling all of it to get it all identified correctly. So, was hoping that we'd be able to do so without incurring that expense, but it looks like it probably will be necessary.
Okay. Okay, next report, Economic Development Committee report?
Economic Development Committee met on October 14th, 2018 and recommend following actions. Setting a public hearing on November 14th, 2018 to consider prospective changes to the enterprise zone.
Okay, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Mr. Bear, you want to, we have a map up?
There's on page 81 of the agenda. There's basically a, it's a proposal. We can amend the enterprise zones. The JIDA has been working with these landowners and has recommendations. The first one, the first page on the map are lots that you see in the Fairview Industrial Park. Starting on the left of the property, basically, we're looking at adding the Builder's Supermarket property and the former Southern Pharmacy property that's on it. And then the lots in the back are the J.J. Haynes and the M.E.C. property, all the way over to the Evatran property. And these would put these in the enterprise zone and possibly qualify them for incentives or any revitalization or additional jobs created at these facilities. The second location shows the Apex Center been removed from the enterprise zone because it is government-owned. It is not eligible for incentives, so we'll be removing that 41 acres from it. The adjoining 56 acres that we still own stays in the enterprise zone and needs to stay in the enterprise zone for the sale and development of those lots down there that we're talking about. And then the last addition is an area just north of the town of Royal Retreat, the property between the interstate and Musser Lumber. This is some property that has some recent interest and been looking at and it's just would add it into the enterprise zone. Mr. Manley from the JIDA came to the meeting last week to review these proposed revisions.
Okay, setting a public hearing for November the 14th. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed? So, set. Next item?
Second item is making an application to the Vaco Commission for a $100,000 agribusiness grant for construction of a barn on the Apex property. The grant will provide $200,000 and the county will provide $200,000.
Okay, again, come from committee, doesn't need a second. Mr. Bear, you want to talk about your meeting with the Vaco Commission?
Yes, previously, as you all know, on page, I guess it is 84, 85 of the agenda, I've been showing sort of our Apex budget status and I've been showing $275,000 just as a holding number on the barn out there. When I went to the Vaco Commission meeting in Floyd, I spoke with their staff about our proposal for a barn. They wanted to come and talk to us about it. They basically had spoken to us before, agreed with the concept and were highly interested in the agribusiness concept. Ms. Williams came here, Mr. Foal was on the telephone call with us, went through the development, the figures. They were strongly supportive of the grant application that we are submitting and within the guidelines of what they're submitting and within the dollar range of what they are looking at. Following the phone meeting, did take Ms. Williams out with Mr. Stowers and we did a tour of the site out there. They are excited about the location. They're excited about events at the location. In fact, one of the comments she made was, "This might work as a good location for one of our receptions that we hold prior to a Vaco Commission meeting in the future out here." So, you know, it takes a full commission vote to get a grant, but staff support behind the project is very critical and this was very positive feedback from them on this grant application. So, that, the application is due in October 18th and just referred it to the Economic Development Committee to look at getting the board's approval and support on this to go in with the grant application.
Anybody have any questions?
If we put in for the grant, do we have to accept it if it's awarded?
You certainly have the option of not accepting the grant. Currently, of the $200,000 match, there is $50,000 that has been provided by the Farm Bureau for a barn that goes towards this. And the AAEC, the 501(c)(3) forerunner to this organization, currently has approximately $18,000 that they have committed towards this. So, without any additional fundraising or support from any agencies right now, they currently have about $68,000 that we could use as matching funds towards this project.
But on page 84 on your budget status, with the total funds from the end of August and the budgeted funds minus the estimated expenditures, it looks to me like that leaves $104,722. So, my question is, if we get the grant, where's that other money coming from?
And keep in mind, all those items up there are estimates and what we, whether we finish those off or not. So, like the west parking lot at $120,000. That's gonna require an entire permit upgrade, so we may not do that full west parking lot or we may not do it to that level. So, all of those numbers are subject to change, but that is why it's very important for us to be doing all the items as efficiently and effectively as we can, saving money for this amount.
Any other comments? Here are none, we'll take a vote, a roll call vote on applying for the $400,000. Mr. Horni?
All right.
No.
No.
And the chair votes aye. Motion passes 5 to 2. Anything else from the Economic Development Committee? Okay, Apex Construction Committee?
Apex Construction Committee met on October 5th. Two recommendations, they can separately install additional snow guards on the lower roof system at a cost of $5,860.
Okay, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Mr. Bear, you want to explain why the extra snow guards is needed?
Yeah, basically, there was a discussion at the last meeting. The steep, or the large area roof already had snow guards included on, double set of snow guards on it. The lean twos, which have about half of the size of the other roof, only had snow guards above the entranceways. The building construction contractor and our inspector out on the job does recommend the installation of those snow guards, one, to protect from individuals on the sidewalk, but more importantly, to protect our HVAC units that sit outside on the sidewalk on those areas. So, it's recommended to install the, it was recommended and they provided a cost of installing the snow guards on the rest of the roof.
Okay, any questions?
And these are the good snow guards like Mr. Hale talked about, not the
It's not the little clip-ons.
They're a bar.
The bar, yes.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball? And the chair votes aye. Next item?
Item two, approval of up to $4,875 for a sidewalk. We have on here the extension, but it was omitted in the original design. And we really need that to finish out the sidewalk on the main entrance of the front of the building and it takes you out to the parking area.
Okay, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second and you want to add anything else, Mr. Bear? I mean, I don't understand, you know, we missed it in the plans when it come, we looked at them. The sidewalk on the back went the whole length of the building, but the sidewalk on the front, we liked 75 feet.
Yeah, they had the water vault in that area and I just don't, I think they considered people coming in from the handicap parking lot coming across that area, but it didn't make sense for it not to be included. The price here is basically about 50% of what the previous amount discussed was. Mr. Vaughn is still awaiting and we did have a meeting this morning with RGM and have expressed to them the importance of going ahead and getting the price on this while the concrete people are out there so we can go ahead and get this taken care of. And it does make a much better finished product with that sidewalk around there.
So, this is the same section that we discussed at our
It is the same section, yes.
The one that was around $9,000?
Yes, that's correct.
Any more questions?
I'd like to comment about that. We incorporated general conditions. And there's a section in general conditions that tells you how to price a change order. They got a verified material and the labor and the markup. Mr. Vaughn, if they do that, it doesn't come to $9,000, does it? It's $4,800 in line if you use that method.
It's more aligned with our independent estimate.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? Here are none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni? And the chair votes aye. Next item, the MRCSB Annual Performance Agreement. Mr. Bear?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Every year we receive one of these performance contracts for review and approval and this is their latest annual performance agreement. There is, sorry, on page 91 of the package, sort of just a two-page summary of their requirements and their dollar figures that go in there. And then there is a large, long section for your reading pleasure of the performance agreement. And recommend the approval of the performance agreement.
Have a motion to approve. Have a second. Have a motion, a second. Any discussion, questions? Here are none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball? The chair votes aye. Vaco Annual Business Meeting, voting credentials.
I think several of you all are gone. We do need to appoint members to be our voting members and our alternates for the Vaco Annual Meeting in November.
Entertain a motion, I mean, a nomination for a voting credential?
Mr. Chairman, historically, you have been the one doing it. With you running for position, do you want to still assume that or would you like someone else to do that?
Somebody else to do it.
Well, they're jumping at, they're jumping up, wanting to do it.
Would anyone like to do it?
Would anyone like to do it?
My recommendation would be, the vice chairman's gonna be there, the voting delegate should, my recommendation would be for the vice chair and then the alternate be any of the rest of you all that's gone, but you all can nominate whoever you all want to do it. But it's basically just who's casting our vote at the meeting.
Somebody wants to nominate Joe?
I'll nominate him.
Have a second?
I'll say that.
All in favor, say aye? Okay, alternate? Somebody got a four-sided coin to flip?
Is everyone going, other than myself?
Are you not going? I was getting ready to nominate you.
I would if I could be there.
I'm going.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Ball then.
I knew that was going to, thanks a lot.
Have a second. Have a motion and second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Okay. What else we have to do to this?
I believe that's all, isn't it, Ms. Clerk? The regional meeting's in there for information, and that's up to Mr. Kidd to get that grouped together.
And I'll explain to that, on the Board of Directors, you have, you can, it's a two-year term, and you can serve two terms. Since I was elevated to President-elect, we had a meeting and our counties in the twelfth region, Region Twelve, voted Adam Kidd, Chairman of the Bland County Board Supervisors, onto the Vaco Board of Directors. He will have to, we will have to hold another meeting at the homestead. On which night is it? Monday night or Sunday?
Regional caucus is four thirty PM on Sunday, November eleventh.
Sunday. At that point in time, well, either reappoint, whatever the county decides, Mr. Kidd or somebody else as Region Twelve's seat on the Board of Directors. Every one please attend that meeting. Okay. Next item is Virginia Department Emergency Management.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. There is just a grant there from the L.E.M.P.G., receipt amount of $13,017. Mr. Stowers and I sat in on a conference call that was required mandatory for this grant and recommend acceptance of this grant.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Have a second? Any discussion or questions? Here none. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Vaughn?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. School Resource Officer Security Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, Mr. Stowers, and I will say this, surprisingly was successful. I thought after getting the first grant that we would not get a second grant, but he was successful in obtaining a second grant for us, like the original previous grant, for a full-time SRO position. The grant amount is $33,564. And recommend acceptance of that grant as well.
Entertain a motion to accept. Have a second? Have a motion and second. Any other questions?
I will mention, I'll be putting this also on the Budget Committee Agenda for Discussion. It cannot be supplanted in any local funds, so we've got to make certain that this shows as an additional position there, and there may be some additional costs that will be covered in the process. But to get a grant for a full-time position, I think we're willing to absorb those additional costs.
That's what I'm going to ask. Can this add another officer for fill-in or rover, so you got an extra?
It will provide, it will provide another full-time position. I'm not exactly certain how the sheriff will assign those in the process.
But we had the money to do them all.
Yep.
So, we've added more money. But we're going to get a budget for that money?
And what I've looked at in the budget, I believe we had put $50,000 is what we expected to get in grant funds. Of course, we got thirty-three with the first one, so we can take seventeen out of this one and then say that's what our grant money is, and then add additional to it. But I will be meeting with the sheriff to discuss how he is assigning this additional position.
Any other questions?
Mr. Burr, unfortunately, I will go ahead and read my conflict disclosure.
Okay.
Just to be safe, there seems to be a few out there, making sure that I read it every time, so. This is conflict disclosure, Sheriff's Office. I, Ryan Lawson, a member of the With County Board of Supervisors, declare pursuant to the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act regarding this matter of the school resource officer grant program involving the With County Sheriff's Office. I have a personal interest because my husband is a full-time employee of the With County Sheriff's Office, which will be affected by the matters of the school resource officer grant program to be discussed in our meeting this evening. And I declare that I am able to participate in this matter fairly, objectively, and in the best public interest.
Thank you.
Best to be safe. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and do mine. I, Brian Vaughn, as a member of the With County Board of Supervisors, declare pursuant to the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act regarding the matter of the school resource officer grant involving the With County Sheriff's Office, I have a personal interest because I am a full-time employee of the With County Sheriff's Office, which may be affected by the matters discussed in our meeting this evening. And I declare that I can, I'm able to participate in this matter fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Yeah, thank you. Here no other questions. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni? The chair votes aye. Mr. Burr, any other business come forth to the board at this time?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
I'll get to you. Okay. Does any board member wish to bring up anything at this time? Mr. Hale?
Stephen, what impact did the air pack grants really have on our budget?
The, what are you talking about? The departments did receive $30,000 grants towards the air packs. The cost for the air packs, I want to say, was up around $100,000 for each department. So, we still are left with coming up with about $70,000 to go with that, unless they do get any funding through rural development, which was another application that the groups had put in. I believe that was only twenty or twenty-five thousand that they could get through it. So, if they were able to successfully get that, I don't know where the status of that is, it would pay for maybe about fifty percent of what we were looking for.
So, right now, you're saying we're thirty percent better off than we were?
Yes.
And the paper was totally wrong. I don't think the Wedminds got any air packs.
They did not.
They got a defibrillator for the new ambulance.
That's correct. I think that, I don't know if that came from the paper or from the press release from the foundation, but yeah, that was a mistake. It wasn't for the air packs. But $30,000 is far better than what we have been getting on some other things recently. So, appreciate the support on that, and I appreciate Blake working with them to get that in.
Additionally, today, down at Fort Chiswell, I don't know whether any of you attended or not, but they had sort of a mini Ag Day and FFA. They had different animals there, and elementary kids were brought and introduced to animals. And I went over there this morning, and it was really great to see the elementary kids. They had some miniature ponies and some beef cattle, show cattle, riding horses, ducks. I think one of the ducks was trying out for that, like, maybe it was a commercial because it never shut up the whole time. But it was a good thing it's down on a football field. It's put on by FFA, and different elementary kids were over there. Good problem at the school.
Okay. Does any other board member have anything to bring up at this time?
Are we going to take that? Do we need to get the public hearings?
No. Well, I mean, we can. If, I mean, we didn't have any public comment to weigh, so. Which one do you want to take up, Mr. Lester? Or you want to take up all of them?
We'll take up all of them if we don't...
Okay. You can make a motion on the first one, and I'll see if we got a second. On the emissions tax?
Yes, we... There's often emissions tax on the paper.
Have a second? Have a motion and second. Any other discussion? Here none. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Disposition of real property?
No action to be taken there, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Yep. Public hearing. Amendment number two, manufactured home ordinance. Entertain a motion to approve the amendment. Have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Here none. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Vaughn?
Aye.
And then the chair votes aye. Okay. Anything else come forth to the board at this time?
For clarification on the emissions tax. Stephen? We're going to go with them paying monthly. That quarterly thing just don't make sense to me.
I'll talk with Ms. Barker about it and tell her that, I mean, she's got the option of negotiating with them, but tell them that recommending monthly is a better option.
Or does she have that option because it's in the ordinance?
Yes.
And that ordinance is not mandated by the state. That's a county ordinance.
Correct.
So, can you highly recommend that it be monthly?
Yeah.
The other two don't make sense to me. The other two that are done that way, people send in a voluntary check, and we say, "Thank you." It didn't work for the Romans.
Well, as long as we get the money, I don't care where they send it in monthly.
But you don't get the right amount. You have no way of knowing that you get the right amount.
Well, I mean, you count how many tickets they sold.
In that case, you can, but in our other two, it's a voluntary thing. There's no audit. We've had repeated cases where people don't pay food tax or room tax.
But she does send staff out and have them buy things at different places to see if the taxes are showing up on it correctly, and if they don't, she does follow up on them.
Well, I still don't understand how these truck stops, and you go to Arby's, you get a pilot receipt. So, I don't know.
I mentioned to some of y'all about the red light at Royal Retreat. If it's all right, y'all, I'm just going to tell the lady that brought us the red light to talk to the county about it. If they need support, then they can ask us for support.
Yeah, I mean, I think ultimately...
They've already contacted VDOT. VDOT's going to do a study.
I mean, it's ultimately added, it's to the town council whether they put it up or not.
That's what I'm trying to say, but, I mean...
I know.
I think that's the way to go. No, up at Buck Street. Buck Street and Main Street. They're PBT.
There's people threatening to leave Royal Retreat with one stoplight. I don't know what will happen to them.
You keep messing my district, I'll come up there and board up and finish some of your roads.
Well, you might as well, because they evidently bored under it and then ground it back out today.
Well, too. Didn't have a problem to y'all. Built that superhighway up there.
Anybody else have anything come forth to the board at this time? Here none. We are adjourned.